I would like to call the June 24, 2020 meeting of the Board of Education to order. Will the Secretary to the Board please call the roll?
Aranda.
Here.
Daniels. Franchakas.
Here.
Ling.
Here.
Ruffalo.
Here.
Towns.
Here.
Williams.
Here. Mr. Wharton, would you please lead the audience in the pledge?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the fiscal, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session meeting of May 27, 2020 as presented? Motion by Serge.
Second.
Second by Jeremiah. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Aranda.
Yes.
Franchakas.
Yes.
Ling.
Yes.
Ruffalo.
Yes.
Towns. Williams.
Yes.
Aranda. Franchakas.
Yes.
Motion approved. Is there a motion to approve the accounts payable for the month of June 2020 as follows? Education Fund: $1,520,216.95. Operations and Maintenance Fund: $107,791.91. Debt Fund: $0. Transportation Fund: $38,056.21. Municipal Retirement Social Security: $88,939.21. Capital Projects: $2,466,760.49. Working Cash: $0.
Towns.
Student Activity: $1,333.67.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Aranda. Franchakas.
Yes.
For a total of $4,223,98.25. Motion approved. I have not received any blue cards on agenda items this evening. Our presentation tonight will be from Mr. Keely on the tentative budget. I need a motion, please.
A motion.
Mr. Keely. Motion by Jeremiah.
Today is the next step in the creation of the fiscal year 21 budget, the journey that began
Second.
Second by Rudy. Questions or discussion?
Franchakas.
Yes.
Ling.
Yes.
Ruffalo. Towns.
earlier this spring with Budget Committee, including our Budget Committee meeting last month.
Williams.
Yes.
Aranda.
Yes.
Motion approved. Is there a motion to approve the payroll for the month of May 2020 as follows?
As we're aware, there's many variables that will plan to the fiscal year 21 budget, not
Education Fund: $2,472,77.44.
the least of which is the Consumer Price Index, which for this calendar year is currently trending in the negative, and that does have a big impact on our revenue for next year.
Building Fund: $45,208.38. Transportation Fund: $4,598.54.
So what we're going to talk about today is every year we talk about the legal requirements
For a total of $2,521,884.38.
for the budget adoption, which I'll walk you through quickly in a moment. We'll overview the tentative revenues and expenditures based on the information that
I need a motion, please.
Second.
Motion by Serge.
we know at this time.
Second by Jeremiah.
Then we'll go over a few budget highlights and then a summary of the budget.
Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Again, there's a reason this is called the tentative budget. This is our first opportunity to share with the board our expectations.
Ling.
Yes.
Ruffalo.
We expect a whole lot more clarity by the time we bring this back to the board in the form of a final budget at the September 30 Board of Education meeting. So starting with the legal requirements for budget adoption, prior to adoption, the board must place the tentative budget on public display for at least 30 days. That starts with this evening's presentation. Next, we schedule a date and time for the public hearing on the proposed budget, which is, as mentioned earlier, the September 30 regular Board of Education meeting. We must then publish a notice of the public hearing in a newspaper general circulation within the district. That notification will be published in the newspaper next week, notifying the public of the September 30 meeting. Finally, we actually conduct that public hearing on September 30 as placed in the notice in the newspaper. So we're going to first look at an overview of our expenditures and revenues, starting with revenue. The revenues are allocated based on funds and they fall into three major categories. First is the local, which comprises the majority of our revenue each year. That comes in the form of property taxes, corporate personal property replacement taxes, and then we receive local funds from things like tuition fees, earnings on investment, food service, activities, et cetera. The next category is our state funding, primarily coming in the form of the evidence-based funding, which is new as of the last couple of years. The good thing with that, while our tax levy increases may be reduced as a result of the following CPI, there is a hold harmless clause in the EBF legislation. Therefore, the district, in theory, should not receive less than the prior year. Each year, there is additional tier funding provided to school districts as the state endeavors to bring all school districts to what they call adequate funding levels. We spoke with the Budget Committee earlier this year, last month that is, and we have indications from the state that there will be no additional tier funding this year. The tentative budget will reflect that. In addition to evidence-based funding, we also receive categorical aid. For instance, our transportation reimbursement and certain special ed categoricals as well. And then finally, the third category is through federal funding. This comes in the form primarily of title funds, and then this year, new, will be our CARES Act funding, which is emergency relief money from the federal government to offset COVID-related expenses. Actually, we have a chart that essentially shows the breakdown of that revenue and how it comes in. As you can see, just under 60% of the revenue comes in through the form of property taxes, with the next largest category being the evidence-based funding we discussed at 23%. Now we look at our overall tentative budget revenue when compared to last year's final budget revenue. We see that the overall levy increase for our fall collection, that's the calendar year 2020 fall collection, will be at 2.3%. It's based off the December 2019 CPI. The other portion of our tax levy for the coming fiscal year comes in the form of the spring collections, and we've tentatively budgeted that at 0%, again, as CPI is trending negative right now. There's additional full EBM payments and then zero tier funding, as discussed. Overall, we look at our operating funds. We see an approximate 1.98% increase in revenue, a sharp decrease in debt service as our long-term debt falls off the tax rolls. Next, we'll briefly go over the expenditures. They're allocated, again, based on accounting standards, to various funds, and they're classified in one of eight objects, those being salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies and materials, capital outlay, other objects, non-capitalized equipment and termination benefits. Next is a chart showing how those expenses are broken out. Again, we see that, as we have in years past, salaries and benefits comprise over 60% of our expenditures each year. Coming in next is our purchase services, and then, of course, with our current capital improvement projects, capital outlay at about 12%. So we'll do the same thing we did with revenue. We'll look at our expenditures versus our 2020 fiscal year budgetary expenses. And as you can see, our tentative expenditures overall for all operating funds are up about 2.3%. We'll notice the education fund is up about 4.8%, primarily, again, owing to salary and benefit increases from the collective bargaining agreement. We see a sharp decline in our operations and maintenance spending. It's a purposeful reduction of about 16%, acknowledging the fact that we are doing significant capital projects, and with the impending flat tax levy, we've made adjustments to preserve fund balance. Transportation fund decreased slightly, primarily related to potential reductions due to no transportation in the spring. AMREF and Social Security is up just over 4%, again, a number that's familiar to us because we have budgeted for 4% increases across the board. So some of the highlights at this point that we can share with you from the instructional standpoint, we're looking to replace the junior high math curriculum. We are currently in the process of piloting new furniture at our elementary classrooms, and then we are completing the purchase of the new furniture from our junior high classroom pilot with expected installation in the next six to eight weeks. From a facility standpoint, as we've talked about here at these meetings, we have substantial work that we're doing to improve our facilities. Current 2020 work that's being completed, discussed earlier in our BNG committee meeting, is the Indian Trail student support wing renovation, addition of four classrooms at the ELC in Ardmore Campus, securing of the vestibule at the Ardmore Campus, and then boardroom and meeting space enhancements in the boardroom hallway, pardon me, that includes a new consumer and family science lab. So as far as a summary of the budget, we look at the revenues versus expenditures from an operating budget standpoint. We've discussed in the past, operating funds exclude debt service and capital projects. These are essentially the funds that are utilized, the revenues and expenditures utilized to run the day-to-day operations of the district. We see that there's about a $2.6 million expected surplus overall, the majority of that being the $4 million surplus in operations and maintenance. Later this evening in the board meeting, as we have the last two years, we will be making a transfer from the operation, or I'm sorry, from the education fund to the capital projects fund to fund that, and in the next fiscal year, we will be transferring fund balance from operations and maintenance to fund capital projects. Now we include the debt service and capital project funds, which are non-operating funds, and as you can see, we have a significant deficit in our tentative budget of right over $8 million. This is purposeful, as we continue to utilize existing fund balance from prior operational savings to improve our facilities. The next steps, as discussed earlier, are to approve the tentative budget later in tonight's board meeting. It's an action item. The tentative budget will be put on display on the district website and available in the district office, and then the final budget hearing and approval will take place at December 30 board meeting. I can't stress enough that the information that we have right now is significantly limited when compared to this conversation we've had with you in prior years. We have our eyes on the Bureau of Labor Statistics to see what our CPI is going to end up at. The conversation about shifting pension cost locally is at the forefront more than it ever has been, as is the discussion about how we provide relief to our taxpayers in terms of a property tax freeze. All of these things have the Budget Committee, the administration, and the Board of Education acting in very conservative ways, and as we've discussed at the BNG committee level, our long-term plans can be changed at any point to react to those items. So that concludes my formal presentation. I would gladly accept any questions from the Board of Education at this time.
Any questions from the board members?
We're actually going to provide an update later in the meeting on that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Keely. We're down to committee reports. There was a Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting prior to this meeting. Mr. Ruffalo.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anybody interested in trying to light out how our projects are going, I'll let you know.
Hear me now? Thank you.
I can hear you.
So let's talk first about our Indian Trail boiler replacement bid. The low bidder is AMS Mechanical Systems at just over $175,000, and it is going to be the recommendation of the BNG Committee to go with AMS Mechanical Systems as the lowest responsible bidder, and we will be discussing that later tonight. Second, we discussed the security audit and what we've got going on this summer. For those of you who might not remember, we did do a security audit earlier in the last school year, and we're now addressing things like alarm systems, cameras, access controls at our schools and all our facilities, actually, doors and door hardware, locks being rekeyed, fire alarm systems, especially at Army Trail, Indian Trail, and District Office, the removal of the hallway barricade over at Army Trail, things like landscaping over grow bushes, kind of unsafe blocking windows near doors. We're looking at doing some work with that. And lighting, we're talking about replacing old or light that is just not working with new LEDs, and we're kind of trying to address that in all of our schools to make our areas secure and well-lit day and night. Then finally, phone system has been upgraded, and we currently now will have fully functional phones in every room in our offices, our facilities. Moving on to capital improvements, 2019 project is almost done, so driving through, by any of our schools, most of the schools now have lit entryways that do identify the school by name, and hopefully that will finally conclude within the next 30 days. 2020 project, that's the big one. We've got lots of things going on throughout the district. We did do a tour earlier today, and any of the board members who are interested, they could make the tour, ask me after the meeting, and I will go through some of the neat things that are going on, but it's impressive to see what has been accomplished in the last few months, and I'm pretty comfortable in saying that I think we'll make our dates as far as getting everything ready for our fall school year. Things that are going on at the ELC in Ardmore, there are walls up, drywall is pre-painted, electricians have done most of their work, mechanical ductwork is almost fully completed there. In the Indian Trail boardroom, same thing, the walls are up, soffits are being completed. A lot of the mechanical work is done. The student support wing is really shaping up, and we're pretty impressed by how it's starting to look. A lot of the student services offices on the second floor, they're pretty much ready for painting. The spin room has been expanded, walls completed, and the frames are set for the glass, so that room is probably, I would say, 90% completed. The fax labs are in that same spot, and our corridors are starting to take shape, so we're pretty excited about all the work. The workers have, at a little additional time, one of the positives from COVID and our schools being empty is the construction workers have been able to get in and really get ahead of those projects. And then finally, talking about 2021, we're in these community design and budgeting phases, so Leggitt has put together conceptual estimate drawings, and we'll get it in front of ICI so they can start getting construction estimates together that the board from there would be able to decide, well, what are we going to actually hope to accomplish in our 2021 projects? And as Mr. Keely said earlier, we're looking at potential district white door and handle replacements, chiller plant replacement at Indian Trail, and potentially doing innovative learning space pilots at Army Trail and Lake Park. So our next BNG meeting will be late August, and we will have plenty more to discuss. So that is it. If there's any questions or anything I missed, Jeremiah or Jay, Mr. Keely, Mr. Langton.
Perfect.
Anybody? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffalo. We're down to administrative reports. Superintendent Langton.
Yes, sir. So last week, when I put together my superintendent's report, it was based on the understanding that we may be moving to Phase Four, which, as of now, everybody has heard effective Friday, Illinois is moving to Phase Four. So the next step is to determine, and this comes from the State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health, what are the guidelines that we need to use for reopening schools in the fall? Yesterday, Governor Pritzker and State Superintendent Carmen Ayella had a press conference where they revealed publicly those guidelines in summary for how we're going to hold in schools. Literally five minutes after the press conference started, school superintendents throughout Illinois received an email with the document attached. So we did not see the document until after 2:30 yesterday. So of course, many community members, employees, people in general who care, are looking for answers from their public schools on what are the guidelines going to be for opening schools safely in the fall. Reality is, no school district can yet tell you what that's going to look like. What I did share with you in the original draft of my superintendent's report was that our school district was taking a proactive approach by setting up three key teams that are going to be planning teams to develop plans that will be fluid and allow us to modify the opening of school based on the circumstances in August. The good news is, our first day of school is not until Tuesday, September 1st, which normally, that's kind of a harried situation, but I think this year, that is going to play to our favor with being able to make informed decisions to return to school safely. The three teams that I mentioned, our instruction team, which is headed by Mrs. Haney, we have our health and wellness team, which is headed by Ms. Cartman, and we have the operations and facilities team, which is headed by Mr. Keely. All three teams have between eight to 12 staff members from our school district. All three teams have started their work. Actually, I take that back. The instruction team starts tomorrow, correct? Okay, perfect. So by, really, the week after 4th of July, we're aiming to start making substantive progress with developing those fluid plans. I will communicate back to the board as we develop those plans, and a letter is sent to go out to all of our families at the end of this week, giving them a brief summary of what I just explained to you. The reality is, right now, we can't tell you anything other than our goal is to open school on time, in person. What's within our control, we're going to be able to manage. What's not within our control, we will make decisions as we move forward based on the circumstances. So if I can pause my report there for a second, are there any questions from our board members about the status of where we're at right now? Nope? Okay. So the only other items in my report, I wanted to give you an update that there was legislation passed requiring that November 3, 2020, is a state holiday, so all public offices and schools have to be closed for the presidential election. You may remember that back in January, you approved not only this coming year's school calendar, but the next one as well, and so we're going to have to amend that calendar to reflect that as a day off. So I will give you a draft of that in the coming weeks, and I will ask for your consideration at the July 29 board meeting. And the only other item in my report?
John, does that mean you're going to extend the school year by one day?
Not necessarily. And what I can share with you, but I'd prefer not to get into great deal because it's a little bit murky, when Mrs. Stelter submitted our final calendar for this past year, we discovered that the state changed their coding, which modified the calculation of student attendance days. So we may be able to get away without having to add a day at the end. We're still working on that. So that's about all that I can say right now. The other piece, and Mrs. Haney is kind of tortured by this, the information that was released yesterday includes the possibility of additional days that can count as instructional days that we still have to work through, and that would have to be included in the planning of that calendar.
It's so frustrating to me that the state would do something like that and take away more instructional days. This is ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous.
I concur, especially when all school districts approved their new calendar back in the spring. Yeah. However, I will tell you that a friend of ours, who used to be a state representative, shared with me today that he believes that this is something that the legislator has been trying to push through for quite some time, and this is an opportunity to get schools closed on an election day. So, and I do understand saving kids, but I don't understand why you force school offices or district offices to also be closed for 12-month employees. That doesn't make sense.
Especially when they're pushing.
Correct.
Mail-in and everything else, and polls are all kind of wild.
Then the only other item in my report was the Freedom of Information Act request that we had received. Mr. Wharton responded, and then there was a follow-up question that we still haven't responded to, so you'll get that information next week once we make decisions about the response. And that's all that I have.
Any questions for Superintendent Langton? Okay, we're down to Mr. Keely.
Thank you very much. I have a very brief report this evening. I will skip over the first part, which is a facilities update, which has been covered pretty significantly by Mr. Ruffalo. We're very excited about the progress that we're seeing and really look forward to eventually sharing these new spaces with our students and staff. The other note I have is regarding our preliminary audit work. Typically, this time of year, we'd have our friends in Klein Hall in the office doing prelim work with our business office staff due to current circumstances. We're going to do that remotely with the hope that the final work that's done in August, September will be in person. Our expectation is that we're going to have the annual financial report to present to the Board of Education at the October meeting. That's all I have.
Any additional questions for Mr. Keely? Okay, now I have a report from Mrs. Haney from the Teaching and Learning Department. Mrs. Haney.
Thank you. I also have just a couple things to share with you. Despite being remote, our curriculum committees have continued to work throughout the spring and the summer to complete the needed work. So our dual-language committee worked on finalizing our recommended language allocation plan. We are preparing a presentation for our staff to share our changes and recommendations. The literacy committee finalized pilot options for next year, as well as our grade-level writing rubrics, and in July, EDC will meet, hopefully in person, to finalize our professional development goals, our focus areas for the 2021 school year, and our Welcome Back Institute Day on August 31, which will look very different than it has looked in the past. The math committee will meet to discuss instructional plans for the fall based on the potential outcomes that students have had with remote learning, and the literacy committee will create a plan for the rollout of the writing rubrics, and in addition, the Indian Trail math department will have their training from their newly adopted math materials, the big ideas of math. So that will all take place during the month of July. The last thing I wanted to share is that, if you remember, our elementary school
Any additional questions for Mr. Keely? Okay. Now, I have a report from Mrs. Haney from the Teaching and Learning Department. Mrs. Haney?
Thank you. I also have just a couple of things to share with you. Despite being remote, our curriculum committees have continued to work throughout the spring and the summer to complete the needed work. So, our dual-language committee worked on finalizing our recommended language allocation plan. We are preparing a presentation for our staff to share our changes and recommendations. The literacy committee finalized pilot options for next year as well as our grade-level writing rubrics. And in July, EDC will meet, hopefully in person, to finalize our professional development goals, our focus areas for the 2021 school year, and our Welcome Back Institute Day on August 31st, which will look very different than it has looked in the past. The math committee will meet to discuss instructional plans for the fall based on the potential results that students have had with remote learning. And the literacy committee will create a plan for the rollout of the writing rubrics. And in addition, the Indian Trail Math Department will have their training from their newly adopted math materials, the big ideas of math. So, that will all take place during the month of July. The last thing I wanted to share is that, if you remember, our elementary schools piloted coding and robotics. And it went really well. The kids really loved it. And with our Title I funds, we purchased three additional dot-and-dash robot kits and B-Bot kits to be shared across two elementary schools throughout the year. So, they'll be in kits, and they'll move around the district. Our LRC team will update their scope and sequence to include these changes. And we're really excited that our students are going to have more opportunities to problem-solve and collaborate using these robots. Again, also to develop some of the prerequisite skills that they need for a more complex and comprehensive experience in the Indian Trail Technology class, which they are also working on changes to their scope and sequence to make it more innovative and more collaborative for our students. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Mrs. Haney? Okay, thank you very much. We're down to action items. Superintendent Langton?
I had to unmute myself. I apologize. Okay, so, our first action item is the acceptance of resignation requests. And I'm going to ask Mr. Warman to review that, please.
Thank you very much. I am presenting to the board for your approval the resignation requests for the following District 4 employees that are outlined in your board docs and mentioned this evening. The resignation list includes the following licensed staff personnel: Anna Coletti, Bernice Judd, Annalise Peterson, and Vanessa Rubio. I do recommend that this request be approved this evening.
Is there a motion to accept the resignation requests as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jeremiah, second by Jim. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Ruffalo?
Yes.
Towns?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Aranda?
Yes.
Franshakas?
Lang?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next, we have the approval of employment or change of assignment requests. Mr. Warman?
Thank you again. I am presenting to the board for your approval the employment or reassignment requests for the following people. Their names are, again, outlined in your board docs, and they will be mentioned this evening. In the area of licensed personnel, we have four. We have Eric Countryman, Tiffany Zokara, Jamie Fee, and Alyssa Valick. In the area of ESP personnel, we have a change of assignment for Kristi Matui, who's moving from secretary at Ardmore School to the district office. So, I do recommend that this request be also approved this evening.
Is there a motion to approve the employment, change of assignment requests as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Serge, second by Rudy. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Towns?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Aranda?
Yes.
Franshakas?
Yes.
Lang?
Yes.
Ruffalo?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Our next action item is the approval of District 4 one-year employment contracts. So, included in your packet is the spreadsheet for 14 school administrators, and I recommend the 2% raise for them for the 2021 school year as presented.
Is there a motion to approve the administrative one-year employment contracts as presented? Motion by Jim, second by Serge. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Aranda?
Yes.
Franshakas?
Yes.
Lang?
Yes.
Ruffalo?
Yes.
Towns?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Our fourth action item is the approval of the educational support personnel increases for the 2021 school year. Again, included in your packet is the spreadsheet, including all of the current ESPs, recommending a 2% raise for each of them for the 2021 school year as presented.
Is there a motion to approve the educational support personnel ESP salaries for 2021 as presented?
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Jeremiah. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Aranda?
Yes.
Franshakas?
Yes.
Lang?
Yes.
Ruffalo?
Yes.
Towns?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Motion approved.
The fifth action item for this evening is the approval of a one-year contract for wireless hotspots. Mr. Keely, could you review that, please?
Certainly. As has been discussed with the Board of Education in the past, Dr. Losi has done extensive work to determine the level of connectivity across the district. And the latest findings are that over 30% of our school district students' households do not have internet access. One of the biggest challenges to moving to remote learning was this lack of access for those students. As discussed earlier in the tentative budget presentation, we do have access to emergency relief funding from the feds for the state of Illinois in the form of the CARES grants. And part of that funding, we intend to apply for this expenditure. Dr. Losi has been working with T-Mobile on this. You may recall, we brought a proposal to the board. Mr. Mike, can you correct me if I'm wrong? I believe it was Verizon--
Yes.
--was the last time? And the cost, the monthly cost was significantly higher than what we're seeing, and there were data restrictions. What you have before you is a recommendation to approve a contract, a 12-month contract with T-Mobile for 500 mobile hotspots with unlimited 4G data at $20 a month for a total of $120,000 per month. We respectfully request the Board of Education approve this recommendation as presented.
Is there a motion to approve the one-year hotspot contract with T-Mobile as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Zach, second by Rudy. Questions or discussion? Can I ask why we're going to the unlimited side of it as opposed to the other?
If a student was to do remote learning under normal circumstances and the data drain, we estimated that that data plan for each hotspot would be done within a week. So, there was no way that a limited plan would fulfill the needs of those students. That's the reason we recommended the unlimited plan.
Also, considering we're being, I believe, substantially reimbursed for this, obviously, if we get into this, it's going to be an ongoing expense, correct? Year after year?
Not necessarily, because there's a lot of unknowns. So, one of the options that was available to us was a two-year contract instead of a one-year contract, which would, of course, was a better deal, but a significant greater investment because we would have been hooked for the two years. Our hope, and there's a lot of unknowns, but our hope is that a year from now, whether it's a vaccine or we move to Phase 5, we're not going to have to depend on this. Just to clarify, you had referenced substantially be reimbursed. This would be fully reimbursed through the Federal CARES Act funding.
Okay. I guess-- go ahead.
All 500 have their order. We don't have any in possession yet. Yeah, this is a--
As the-- They'll get them or how's it work? Do the-- How do the people-- Yeah?
So, that's a really good question. So, when we redistribute student Chromebooks, at that point, that is most likely when the distribution would occur. The other conversation that we've started is if we're fortunate enough to be in-person learning, we're still going to have these 500 hotspots, and kids are going to be in schools learning. So, then, we would look at options for either having them available through our school libraries or checkout for kids who do need them at home because they don't have internet access. So, it's not going to go to waste, but we have not made those decisions yet. But we're talking about those types of options.
And we're not-- I mean, every year, let's say, we use 50 of them. You could get rid of-- and I don't mean it, like, get rid of, but we could sell 400 of these. We're not-- We don't need them.
So, the interesting part of these hotspots is that the devices, of course, don't cost anything. You pay for the-- Yeah. So, even after that year, I guarantee you that the provider's going to tell us just to keep the devices, and they're going to be hockey pucks for floor hockey. That was funny.
I don't know how you control it, and I'm not suggesting people would do it, but I would be concerned going forward about people that just say, "Well, I'll get a hotspot, and I don't have to have internet service at home."
So, 500 does not fulfill our 31%. That's low. So, what we did, Dr. Losi worked with the principals and our staff to try to forget about the survey that we did previously and just drill down and actually account for which kids did not have internet access. Because there are some kids whose parents figured out how to use a cellphone to connect, and it worked for them. Others were not able to connect. So, we came up with an estimate of just under 500. But we really believe that the need may be greater. But we had made a commitment. We thought that 500 was a fair guess or estimate.
And coming back to unlimited service, that's why I have a concern because it seems like everybody in the household could use that hotspot. I understand, but there would be more incentive for somebody--
Dave, that wouldn't be the case. There's a waste of district's hotspots that they're going to use by students. Come on. Slow down. There's ways you can restrict a hotspot so it can only be used by students.
Okay. All I know is, I think there's going to have to be a lot of controls in place and a lot of monitoring that goes on with these things. So, that's my one big concern. I think it's going to be a lot more work than everybody anticipates.
I agree.
Put you on that committee.
Congratulations.
Do you remember how it was when you were in school?
I had-- I had an abacus. Any other questions or comments on this? Roll call, please.
Franshakas?
Yes.
Lang?
Yes.
Ruffalo?
Yes.
Towns?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Aranda?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Our sixth action item is the approval of an Indian Trail boiler replacement bid contract. Mr.--
Thank you. So, at Indian Trail, there are two main boilers, main boiler plants. The one in question is the orange boiler room that services a portion of the building. Over the last year, we had a very mild winter, so did not use the full capabilities of that boiler, which is good because during the last poor vortex about a year and a half ago, it sustained some hairline cracks to the actual main body of the boiler. It is nearing the end of its useful life. We worked with the BAG Committee to develop a plan to replace it. And the plan is to replace it when we go from cooling to heating season this fall. We worked with AMSco Engineering, the engineering firm that has worked with Leggett Architects over the last two years to develop specifications for our capital improvement projects. And their engineer, main engineer, worked with Kerry Dirk and Danny Matos, our facility's HVAC supervisor, to develop appropriate specifications to optimally meet our needs with the most economical and efficient piece of equipment possible. So, we did a-- published the documents on May 21st. We did a virtual pre-bid meeting, the first of my career, which was interesting. And then, we had several vendors come in and do walkthroughs with Mr. Matos and Mr. Dirk and AMSco Engineering. We were pleased to receive 13 bids from vendors on this project. When we opened the bids, the lowest responsible bidder was AMS Mechanical Systems. And Mr. Dirk, Mr. Matos, AMSco Engineering performed extensive scope review with both the low bidder and the number two. They found no fault with the proposal from AMS Mechanical, checked references, and had full confidence in providing the district with the recommendation to award the bid. Therefore, before you this evening, there's a recommendation to award the replacement of the Indian Trail orange boiler to AMS Mechanical Systems in the amount of $175,597. The attorneys are working on the final AIA documents. Therefore, our recommendation is that you offer as mean to sign those documents once there. Please.
Is there a motion to approve the Indian Trail Junior High School Boiler Replacement Bid Contract with AMS Mechanical Systems as presented? Motion by Jeremiah?
Second.
Second by Zach. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Lang?
Yes.
Ruffalo?
Yes.
Towns?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Aranda?
Yes.
Franshakas?
Yes.
Our next action item is the approval of the Ardmore School Door Hardware Change-- Mr. Keely?
So, as discussed earlier this evening, we have significant construction going on in 2020. Mr. Ruffalo provided an update on Dr. Losi's security audit. One of the main portions of that was the door hardware and redoing the entire district's key schedule to secure facilities. Because we are doing work in the Ardmore GLC campus this summer, which includes replacing doors, hardware, and locks, we took the opportunity to move the scope of the 75-door hardware in Ardmore from the 2021 scope to the 2020 scope. It's coming to you in the form of a change order in the amount of $38,790.62. The rationale being that the contractor is currently onsite, and there are efficiencies there. Therefore, we respectfully recommend the Board of Education approve the change order with ICI contractors for the Ardmore School hardware in the amount of $38,790.62.
Is there a motion to approve the Ardmore Door Hardware Change Order as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Jeremiah?
Second.
Second by Rudy. Questions or discussion?
So, can you tell me that the special committee okayed $38,000 change order for hardware handles?
75 doors, to be exact. Yes, that's correct.
Does the board need one of these things?
Door hardware is not cheap. I will tell you that. Anything related to doors.
We can have this discussion. I mean, we are very confident that that price is very fair and works within what we're trying to achieve, especially when the money comes from the security of our facility. So, the special committee approve this? Of course.
Yes, actually, the entire board approved this earlier this year when they approved the contract with Leggett and ICI for 2021 work. We're merely pulling scope out of the 21 contract, and yes, we're reducing 21 and putting it in 20.
It's going to be cheaper this year than it will be next year.
Sure.
Sounds good in theory.
Any additional questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ruffalo.
Yes.
Towns.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Aranda.
Yes.
Franshakas.
Yes.
Lang.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Our next action item is the approval of the prevailing wage ordinance. So within your packet is a memo regarding that. Mr. Keely, would you like to review that?
Absolutely. This is an annual exercise by statute that the board must approve, and then we update it on our website. It used to be in the past, up till last year, where we had to actually put it in the newspaper. Luckily, Springfield got with the Times and reduced that. So at any rate, in your packet, you have the resolution with the current DuPage County prevailing wages, and therefore, I respectfully request the board approve this resolution as presented.
Is there a motion to approve the prevailing wage ordinance as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Jim, second by Serge. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Towns.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Aranda.
Yes.
Franshakas.
Yes.
Lang.
Yes.
Ruffalo.
Yes.
Towns.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Aranda.
Yes.
Motion approved. Previously this evening, Mr. Keely gave a presentation on our tentative budget. So at this point, I will ask for a motion to approve to place the tentative 2021 budget on display as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Serge, second by Jeremiah. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Yes.
Aranda.
Yes.
Franshakas.
Yes.
Lang.
Yes.
Ruffalo.
Yes.
Towns.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Aranda.
Yes.
Franshakas.
Yes.
Lang.
Yes.
Ruffalo.
Yes.
Towns.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Aranda.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Our tenth action item is the approval of a resolution to transfer funds for capital projects. Mr. Keely, would you like to review that?
Certainly. During the tentative budget presentation, I discussed the transfer of fund balance from the Education Fund, the Capital Projects Fund, to fund our ongoing capital projects. We typically do this at the June board meeting before we close our books for the year to balance out the capital project funds. Therefore, before you, you have a resolution to transfer $6 million from the Education Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. This will fully fund the existing shortfall in the Capital Projects Fund plus an additional payment for June work. We will be coming back to you later this fall with an additional resolution to move funds from the Operation and Maintenance Fund to the Education Fund and on the Capital Projects Fund. Therefore, I respectfully request the Board of Education approve the resolution to transfer $6 million from the Education Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. The transfer shall take place effective June 30th, 2020.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution to transfer funds from the Education Fund to the Capital Projects Fund as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Jim. Second by Jeremiah. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Aranda.
Yes.
Franshakas.
Yes.
Lang.
Yes.
Ruffalo.
Yes.
Towns.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Aranda.
Yes.
Motion approved. We're down to discussion items.
So this month, I would just like to remind everybody that our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education is Wednesday, July 29th. As things progress, we will communicate and make decisions regarding the location, time, and even format for that meeting. I also wanted to draw attention, and we don't need to go through all of this, but in your packet is a series of information regarding an update on our construction project. Mr. Ruffalo or Mr. Keely, is there a need to elaborate further on that? Because I think we've already covered some updates.
Well, if you guys have some time, we can have a discussion, but I thought we nailed it pretty well. Mr. Keely, did we miss anything? Mr. Allen, are we good?
Even door hardware. And that is all we have under discussion items.
I have not received any blue cards on non-agenda items this evening. Is there any miscellaneous unfinished business to bring before the board?
I did want to call attention to the most important item of the evening, and I would like to recognize that although we're meeting in a very awkward fashion, and presenting our meetings in a public and awkward fashion, we're missing an opportunity to honor Mrs. Diane Genokas for all of the hard work and commitment that she's made to Addison School District Four and, quite frankly, the entire Addison community. I know Diane can hear us because she's on the other end of this meeting, making sure that it all gets out to our public correctly. So Diane, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you, but also, on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for always being committed to the board, supporting their goals, and making sure that all of the gears that were running behind the scenes went smoothly. So I would like to ask the board for your support in inviting Diane back when we have an in-person meeting so that we can celebrate her publicly and maybe have a cake on her behalf, which, as you well know, she provided for many of our departed board members in the past to help celebrate their achievements.
Departed board members?
Departed board members. We have moved on to greener pastures.
Move on.
So, but anyway, I just wanted to make sure that we thank Diane for everything that she's done for our community.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, Diane.
Anything else from any board members? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the Wednesday, June 24th, 2020 Board of Education meeting?
No.
Motion by Serge, second by Rudy. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Lang.
Yes.
Ruffalo.
Yes.
Towns.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Aranda.
Yes.
Franshakas.
Yes.
Motion approved, and meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming this evening.
We did it.